Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please.
Ms. DeCarrola, here. Ms. Hale, here. Ms. Hobbie, here. Ms. Candela, here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. I see that we don't have any visitors in person, but if we have anyone online. Okay, while there being no one in attendance, no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
Wonderful. We have two presentations this evening. Our first one is a summer learning update from Mr. Preble, so I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mr. Preble.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sharmel Lewis. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to present some of the information from summer learning this summer. Just as a program overview, we can go to the second slide there. Just a reminder of what it looked like. Summer learning dates were June 6th. We had two sessions this year, June 6th through June 30th. Second session ran two weeks in August, from the 1st through the 11th. We had in-person delivery for the first time in three years, totally in-person, I should say, for the first time in three years. We went Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 11:30, like we normally did, and we were in district this time, both at Diamond Lake and West Oak campuses. We covered SEL, reading, math, and dual language. We also had our extended school year. Students get serviced during this time. We included summer band as we normally do. That's usually the last week in the session, in June, and it was last week in session one. They, their times were the same as our summer learning, and then they concluded with an in-person concert on June 30th. So just to give an idea of what their day looks like, these are the program minutes, so if you're in dual language or in general education, you receive 60 minutes of reading, 60 minutes of math, 30 minutes of SEL, and then 30 minutes of MTSS or intervention time. Our ESY students received services that targeted their goals in their IEP. That would be the difference there. Next slide. So our enrollment, I will say this, I'm gonna go to my cheat sheet of my notes here. Our average attendance for session one was actually 80% across the board, and session two was 77%. Slight dip, like we always see after the 4th of July, but it was encouraging to see that the overall numbers were 80 to 77%. When you break it down, however, when you look at our general education enrollment numbers, our dual enrollment numbers, and our ESY enrollment numbers. Session one for Gen Ed, we had 72 students enroll during session one. We had a 65% attendance rate with those students. During second session, our percentage of attendance actually rose three points to 68%, but you can see the enrollment dropped about 15 students. Dual language, much the same, 45 students enrolled for session one. We had a nice 78% attendance there. That attendance rose to 80%, however, we only had 20 students enrolled in the session two, so you know, our classes were very small in session two. Now, the difference between the Gen Ed and dual language and the ESY is, as families register for Gen Ed and dual language, you could pick session one, or session two, or you could pick both. For ESY, we asked for our families, you're signing up for both sessions, because we're targeting those goals. So you can see the enrollment stayed steady. We had 37 students sign up for both sessions. However, that attendance rate dropped from 70 to 55% in the second session. So our program outcomes, when we, what we did is we created, using EduClimber, we created collections of our students that attended summer school, and we went back into the data and we graphed them from their fall in 21 star scores to their spring in 22 star scores, and then just this past week and fall again. So when you look at these numbers for, and this is arranged by school, so our first three bar graphs are Diamond Lake School going from fall to fall. Then we have West Oak Intermediate, then we have West Oak Middle School. So as we're looking at our fall data from 21 for Diamond Lake School, 32% of our students were in tier two, 68% of our students were in tier three. So on this graph, the gold is the tier two, and the charcoal is the tier three students being represented. In spring, our tier two, excuse me, yes, in spring, our tier two at Diamond Lake fell to 27%, and our tier three increased to 72%. Again, these are just the students who went to Diamond Lake School that went to summer learning. When we took the staff assessment this fall, our tier two increased to 37%, and our tier three decreased to 63%. So we actually saw some growth, and the plan, and the goal is always for that retainment. We don't have a summer slide, but growth is a nice bonus there, so it was good to see. West Oak Intermediate School, fall in 21, we had tier two, 44% of our students. Tier three was 56%. In spring of 22, tier two actually fell to 41%, and tier three grew to 59%. However, during this next, this last assessment last week, tier two went up to 45%, and tier three went, dropped to 55%. So again, we're moving in the right direction. We had a little bit of a different story with our middle school students. On fall of 21, tier two, we had 19%, and tier three was 81%. That improved in the spring to 32% in tier two, and 68% in tier three. Excuse me. Nice giant growth here. We went from, in the fall of this past week, we increased it from 32% to 42% in tier two, and we decreased from 68% to 58% in tier three. So that was actually a very nice surprise. We, those numbers are are good to see. So one of the things we want to do, if you go ahead to the next slide, is talking about next steps. So what we've done is compared spring 22 to fall 22 to see if we're retaining that material. We're seeing that we're doing that. We've grouped the students into EduClimber to easily chart their growth through the year. So we're gonna monitor these students also through the winter and the spring benchmarks to see just what kind of things we're doing and what we can learn from the data. But we want to do a continue start stop for the summer learning program. One of the things I want to do, and this has a lot to do with our enrollment and our attendance, is I want to design a survey for all stakeholders, everybody in the community, parents, staff, students. What can, what can draw families and students to our program? We can look at the attendance percentages, and those look great, but the amount of students here, it's not a lot. In fact, when we started session two and were walking around the buildings, it was almost difficult to tell where summer school was taking place. There are so few kids here, and we want to be able to provide an opportunity in some manner that will draw more students in. What does that look like? We have some ideas, but I want to hear from the community and what their needs are. I want to take a look at curricular materials. Now, for this summer learning session, we relied on our second step programming for SEL, our MyMath resources for math, and our F&amp;P materials for our reading portion. If we can, if we can, I don't want to say guarantee enrollment, but if we know who's coming with enough notice, and we can shape that, we can build a better curriculum roadmap for summer learning. Now, granted, all students that are coming into summer learning are gonna be at different levels, and that's fine. But we can differentiate on something if we have a foundation in place, if that makes sense. We want to take a look at what that's going to look like. And then that also falls into that recruitment and registration process. Perhaps starting earlier with the recruitment for both students and staff, so we know what we have. Work with families to commit to coming to the program, because what'll happen a lot of times is we'll have, you know, we'll have 100, hundreds of kids sign up, and then by the time we get to summer school, half, only half actually enroll. So it's like, how can we, how can we make that a more sustainable number? And I'm open, you know, we're all open to ideas and what we can do with that. Does that mean somehow create a full-day program? What does that look like? Are there different activities to do in the afternoon? Is part of the reason why we're not getting the enrollment that we'd like to see, because families don't have a place for their children to go after 11:30. It's a very strong possibility. Can we partnership with the Park District, even though they're technically out of our district, but that's somewhere to go, something to do that we can possibly transport students over there. It gives our students a full-day experience. It gives the parents what they need out of, you know, the time, and then we can, we can build a program around it. So those are just some ideas, but again, the concept is to build some type of survey, some sort of research gathering tool, so that we can make some better decisions going forward for summer learning. But I wanted to keep it brief and open up to any questions that you all may have.
Could you remind me, how many students were invited to attend?
We actually open it to all students.
Okay.
We do, so ESY is a little bit different. Students that qualify for ESY in those IEP meetings, we're having those conversations. We're inviting them to attend with our open enrollment for general education dual language. We don't aggressively recruit dual language, but we do look at our students who are in tier two and tier three, non-ESY students, and reach out to those families that may not have enrolled and sit, you know, and prompt them to enroll. A lot of times, early on, and I would say like, you know, April, a lot of families are heavily involved in, hey, we're gonna be there, we're gonna be there, we're gonna be there, and then it just, it doesn't happen. I want to know why that is. So as far as who we invite, everybody's invited. Maybe that, does it need to look different? That's something to remain to be researched, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like you get, I don't know, somewhere between 10 and 20% of kids actually attend.
Yeah.
Based on the population, but what would your target be? So if you're, if, I mean, it sounds very much like the next steps you're looking at are 100% on the right track, is to figure out what, what you can do to enhance the program. But like, if you had a goal, or if you had a target, what would you be looking to target?
So it's kind of a twofold answer there. In the current model, I would be targeting all of our tier two and tier three, tier three students, because that's what this model is designed for. It's for their remediation, right? But if we can design a program that's gonna provide other opportunities for enrichment, we can, we can have a place for everybody.
Sure.
And why not have advanced math, advanced reading in summer school? I mean, that, that would be like a dream come true. I'm almost getting goosebumps talking about it. But it's, those are the types of things that we need to figure out, you know, is there a market for that? Will people attend? Can we staff it? If we can't staff it internally, what are our options for, you know, bringing people from outside of our district in to do that? So that goes back to that recruitment and registration process, starting early, but having kind of the, the program vision locked down, so we know what we're trying to sell, so that we can staff it and we can recruit families to participate in it. I'd love to see a program for all of our students.
Yeah, I mean, that to me sounds great. When are you planning on trying to put out the survey?
Well, that's one of the things that I wanted to ask tonight, was what are some things you may, as a board, want to see on the survey? I would love to put the survey out in a couple of weeks, but I don't want to just throw, you know, my questions up. But is there anything that you can think of? And you don't have to answer me now, maybe email me over the next week or so, and just let me know. What are some things that you're looking for to find out from our community of what we can do to make this a more attractive program?
I mean, I think a lot of the points you raised would be points that, that we would bring up to you in terms of, does your child require essentially care for the rest of the afternoon? I would think that many of our families need a full-day program, because if they don't have an older student at home to watch the younger kids, and they're, and the parents are working, there needs to be some kind of childcare. So a half-day program, you know, even though they might want their student in there, really doesn't work for them. I think the Park District idea is very creative. My question, too, would be about costs. Would we be funding that? Would the Park District fund that? We know cost is definitely an issue for a lot of our families. We'll be able to subsidize that. You know, how would the transportation work? How would the food work? Those kinds of things. You know, would there be any flexibility in the programming to let them, you know, do things they might be interested in, or, you know, any of that? I mean, I think that all of those are, to me, all of the questions and the issues you raised are, you know, right on target, in line with everything we've seen kind of in the district in terms of what the families repeatedly kind of indicate as, as issues for other events, not just summer school.
Yeah. In, in past programs that I've been a part of, we've done things where even staff has thrown out ideas of what they would love to teach during summer learning. Enrichment opportunity, I mean, I taught, when I was teaching, I taught a flight school component.
Yeah.
And if you have enough kids registered, you go with it. And if you don't, then we, either you, you teach something else, or you're just not teaching summer learning. And so trying to navigate what that could look like, but then you're absolutely right. How much of that can we afford to provide, and how much of that is going to be a cost to families? And I could see that there's gonna be a fine line, and there's somewhere where what we can offer from, from the district standpoint, what families are willing to support us on financially, and will we get the numbers there? So that's, those are all questions I'd love to get the answers to in the survey.
Yeah, I mean, I would think the goal would be to subsidize as much as possible for any family that needed that.
And, you know, I would work with Mr. Rogers on trying to figure out how we do that.
How many, do you know offhand, how many students in our district fall into that tier two and tier three?
District-wide, I would research that and get back to you on a number. I don't have that with me right now, but. And no, I'm not, I'm not gonna guess. I was about to guess, but I'm not going to.
No, that's fine. I just didn't know if you knew.
Did you say tier two and tier three?
Yeah.
One thought or question, kind of going with what Joyce said. If you're thinking about potentially expanding the program to include enrichment, STEAM things and such, maybe on the survey, get, gauge if certain classes were, had a slight fee, and the core remedial classes were, continue to be completely subsidized, would that also entice families that might otherwise say, well, my child doesn't, either has care issues or doesn't really require this? So it isn't something, whereas, oh, for a nominal fee, maybe I would be interested in sending them for flight school or whatever. It was just a thought to kind of go with that.
You know, a lot of our families that are paying for camp, if there was an educational opportunity that would fall under the same, you know, timeframe of the day, that might have things that would be a mix of, you know, kind of curriculum to support them, but also, you know, fun things or additional activities, that might be a nice mix. It's just that I think that part of the issue is, too, you run into camps, start signing up early, if people are very concerned with the childcare.
Right. And to go along with that, you know, and we have to, we have to figure out what our philosophy is as a district. Two, you get into competitions there, too, as far as programming competition. You know, how do we want to build our relationships with the Park District, with the other camps? We have innovation learning going on. We're gonna draw from them potentially. So what, what can that look like? How do we partner up so that we're not, you know, there's, we want to work together, not against each other, and kind of navigate that. That's a big important piece to it.
Mr. Preble, first of all, I think this is really important, and I really appreciate you, you know, leading this. Couldn't be more important to provide for folks who really need the help the most. Can you just help me better understand? I think I already fell behind. Can you help me better understand how, how slide five correlates to five, six, to slide six, and then I have another question on the following slide?
So slide five, which is not actually part of the present, well. Are you looking, are you looking at the raw? It's okay. So if it says slide, slide, slide five is not included in the overall presentation. That was just almost like a note slide, but it's just talking about general, overall attendance. Yeah.
Because what I was wondering, because if the attendance is 80 in session one and 77 in session two, and it just seems like the, the attendance, when broken out.
Doesn't quite add up to that. Another reason why that slide's not part of the presentation, because what had happened was, that was a calculation based on data that wasn't complete.
Not a problem. That, that clears that up for me. And then, can you just explain on the next, on that slide? What, just one more time for me. What is, we're looking, because I see number of students on the axes, and then we're talking about percent of students.
Yeah. So what you have here, these are the students that are represented that went to summer learning. These are tier two and tier three students, and not all, it's, it's, the data is in EduClimber collected from the three benchmarks. So fall of last year, spring of last year, fall of this year. It doesn't always line up. Some of the students that attended summer school may have not taken one of those, so it's not a perfect amount across the school. But what is important to see, if you look at it from a percentage standpoint, is that our students that are attending summer school are actually retaining, if not growing, based on what we're seeing here. So again, the, the overall student number doesn't line up, but the percentages are nice for what we're looking at from a tier three growing, you know, moving in the tier two standpoint.
Is there any way to sort?
There is.
So that we're looking.
Apple's saying. Yeah, we can get that cleaned up, so that if anybody did not take one of the three, they would just be removed from the data.
Even if it's just, even if it's just fall or spring, it's spring.
Yes, I will work on getting that cleaned up and sent back out to you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Tonight is Mr. Rogers giving us a facility improvement update.
All right, this is going to be very brief, because it doesn't really do it justice just to look at pictures, and doesn't do it justice to look at a 15-second or 20-second clip of the space. But Mr. Hanson was so kind to do a little overview of it, so at least you can kind of visualize what's going on so far. But, you know, as you can see, especially at, we're starting at Diamond Lake, the space is nearly complete. We've got furniture in there. There's many more tables now. The only items we're missing right now is the projector and some of Viewsonic, so we have some viewable spaces, but the cubicles that are in there are really nice. We currently have two occupants. There's the community liaison and the occupational therapist. And there's two blank spots right now that just act as kind of a traveling office or some student breakout rooms. And, yeah, we got a sweet little video here. They all have the same furniture, lockable storage. We'll have spot, the projector will be on the straight back wall there, and the opposite wall, when you walk in, will be a word wall. That, that we're gonna do a survey with staff and see, kind of a collage of what, what it means to be working here at Diamond Lake and the teamwork and collaboration that we, we envision. And then there'll be two other screens that'll be on this. It'll be two different sides. You can view the, any presentations that are going on, board meetings, all summer curricular work will take place there. So we did our first meeting today with PAC, and it was an awesome time just being able to actually use that space and see the teachers' excitement. So extremely, extremely cost-effective renovation we did, just retrofitting an old gym that had no purpose. It's, we did it, we renovated the space cheaper than what it cost us to demo the floor. So we did a really, it was a really nice effort with Chris Thibodeau and the different contractors we've worked with. And so the maintenance building, you can see it's been, went up pretty much in a weekend to get the siding up. The space is gonna be a large interior space where we're gonna have racks, like you'd have at Home Depot. So that way, we're gonna have, we have a forklift here. We're gonna have different bays for each school. It's gonna enhance the storage that we have exponentially, and yeah, there's gonna be two different bays you can enter. So there's a truck entrance, and then that's gonna be a large entrance for our box truck. So the ceiling itself is, I think it's like 30 to 40 feet inside of there. It's gigantic. And there's a second-story mezzanine where there's gonna be office space. Right below that is gonna be a workshop area. So the goal is, in the future, we can utilize that for some STEAM-type collaborative work in there, where kids can have a nice spot to use to work, but it is a gigantic space walking in there. Doesn't do it justice to seeing it from the exterior. So bays are gonna go all the way around and just really enhance the, the storage capabilities, so that way we could actually free up some of the spots we have in the building to be, you know, more usable and learning space. So it'll be nice when we can actually do an overview and do a walk-through on the inside. I believe we should be able to hold a board meeting over the professional development space in the next two months, and then hopefully we can start doing some tours outside here, once we get everything. The, currently the ceilings are getting drywalled, painted, so that'll basically be available in the next couple of weeks here. Any questions about the projects or progress?
Question, first of all, everything looks great, and it's wonderful to see space being utilized in that way, and to create such an inviting area for staff and any guests that might come and see it. Is there any insurance implications with having forklifts and such high? I mean, I was just thinking, just from a safety standpoint, would that be something that's already been changed, discussed? I just was curious about the insurance with having potentially kids working in a space such as this, so.
Yeah, that's, the answer, I guess the basic element of that one is, the district does have general live, a general umbrella coverage that, you know, covers anything for the maintenance team. But yes, when we do have kids and potentially in that space, that's something I'll explore a little bit more thoroughly. It's more of a, you know, hopefully a couple of years down the road, pipe dream, just once we get the space utilized. But, you know, we really do want to make sure we can use as much of this as we can and give kids some, hopefully some other opportunities that just, you know, right now we have our, our fuse program is operating out of a breakout classroom. So we'd like to be able to do more workshop-related items, but, you know, we will, the, Mr. Thibodeau and I talked about, once we get the space organized, we're gonna be having another team come in and make sure it's retrofitted safely. Can't just install bays, and hopefully they just stay put. So there'll be a lot of securing and things like that we'll have to do. But, yeah, the, the hope is that this is gonna be a spot for everyone that we can, that we can use. The maintenance teams are at least excited about the opportunity to potentially use this for some instructional space.
So I was just sharing with Mrs. Hale that we were thinking on our next board meeting, which is September 20th. If you're all available, maybe meeting over at Diamond Lake around 6:15, and we can show you our new space, and then come back here, and hopefully the weather's nice. We can take a walk outside and do the maintenance emporium.
That's gonna stick with me forever. Thank you.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. All right, so I will send out an invite for those of you that would like to join us. And that is all for presentations this evening.
Okay, fantastic. Then we will move on to the business agenda. And we have two items this evening. The first item is for review, and that is the omnibus vote agenda. The second item is up for action, and that is a personnel item. So be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have three new hires. We have two leaves of absence, and we have one resignation. May I have a motion to approve, please? Second. Yes. Okay, and that motion passes. And that concludes the business agenda for this evening. Moving on.
Um, moving on to board discussion.
There is just one item um, under board discussion that I have and I shared a memo with you. Um, so we were, uh, have been, we were approached by um, I A S B and their press plus issue to do online um, updates of when the board approves new policies, that this subscription would just do it automatically right away for us. It would be linked to our website as well as a search engine to, for families to go on to the website and, and to look for it. So it kind of summarized it, our neighboring districts, um, I've listed on there are also using it and they enjoy using it. It's really quick and efficient. I've listed out the prices. Um, so it's in addition to what we're already paying, which is about, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars um, to update the subscription. Uh, I've talked to Mr. Hanson and technology wise, it meets and they would be able to interface with each other. So our website, we have no issues hosting it. Um, but I just wanted to see if the board was interested in pursuing something like this. Um, and if you are, we can go ahead and take care of it. Um, you know, because the cost is only twenty-five hundred or would you prefer that we wait? Or are there any follow up questions that you want me to pursue?
Uh, currently, right now, essentially, once there's an update, we'd get essentially the agenda that's all, that's a PDF version. It's update that whenever it's provided to me and it, they document whenever it's approved. So this is essentially just expedite that process a lot faster instead of uploading a file.
I have a couple of questions. I mean, I would be in favor of doing this in, in light of especially reading the search functionality for it, because right now, you really can't search. You can search, if you know the keywords, you can search to potentially find the section of the word policy, but then you have to open the PDF and research there, you know, which is a pain. If you're looking for a specific policy, it's hard to find. Um, I guess my question is just, so right now, we're paying for both press and press plus and then they add this on top, like, why doesn't, why aren't they just offering like one offer where it's all rolled in? Why are there three different payments there?
Because it's I A S P.
My feedback to them would be, where's the discount if we buy all three things?
Yeah.
And why are we paying all these different fees? Silly.
I'm sure, I mean, I'm happy to ask, you know, since we're already press plus members, which is why we got the email, right? Like, you're already members, why don't we do this?
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to do. It's, I mean, it is much better to have an interactive, um, i- i- an interactive policy manual just for anyone using the policies, whether it's board members, the community, whatever. I mean, it's much better that way. It's, the, the PDF is nice in that they would send us the actual updated text, so nobody is manually having to do those updates. And that way, I think it's, it's likely, you know, you have a little bit more accuracy probably built in. So this adds that functionality. I just don't understand why they're stacking all these costs. I mean, other than it's who it is, but.
Like, I'm definitely can ask, um, when I follow up with them, is this something that the board is interested in then?
I would think so, unless, yeah. Yeah.
All right, I will follow up with you on if they can do anything to kind of consolidate the cost.
Opinion, like, why doesn't this replace the other two? Like, why, why do we have to buy everything? I guess this is my question. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's not an outrageous cost. To me, it's just kind of silly that it's like you have to buy each individual piece and yet they all build upon each other.
And press plus is supposed to be easier than press, but you need one for the other.
Right, I mean, like, why would you do that? Like, shouldn't press plus incorporate for us? That this should incorporate this. But yes, I think the board is definitely in favor of, of doing that.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
And that is all I have for our board discussion.
We agree. So um, we had no freedom of information requests. For notices and communications, we have, as always, the board meeting calendar. As always, if you know you will not be available, please let us know as soon as possible. Um, we have the governing board summary from seat all. John, are we, did we already cover the last seat all meeting in our last meeting? I can't remember the timing of it.
Okay, yeah, the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, I thi- so I think that covers seat all, then we have just the sixth day enrollment. Do we know why I can learn so low? Do we just have less kit? It looks super tiny. It's nice though, right? Okay, that wraps up notices and communications. And now we move to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any attendees? With three, okay. Um, for those of you joining us online, if you have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items, please feel free to type those into the chat box and we'll give you a second to do so. And then we can read them into the meeting. So we'll just pause for a moment there. I'm not seeing anything. Okay, so there being no public comments, we will move on to others. Um, the only others I had for this evening were for the board and um, I wanted to revisit the um, D E I training. So I spoke to I A S B and they offered us the dates of October, October twenty-fourth and, no, I'm sorry, October seventeenth and twenty-seventh. So um, I will send out an email about that. If you guys could let me know your availability for those, it's a Monday and a Thursday. Um, October what, twenty-fourth? I'm sorry, seventeenth and twenty-seven, I think. Let me double check. Yeah, it's a Monday and a Thursday. So let me know if those work. If they don't, I'll, I'll go back to her. I added that as a note. Board meeting, but it's not there. Um, but yes, I'll, I'll follow up via email and then if you guys can let me know your availability, then I can follow up with them. And if those dates don't work, that's fine, I'll just go back to them. Um, does anyone else have any others? Okay, then we will um, move to adjourned executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employer against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity and for the selection of a person to fill a public office, including a vacancy in public office when the district is given power to appoint under law ordinance or the discipline performance or removal of the occupant of public office when the district is given power to remove the occupant under law ordinance and for the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the district. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please? Yes. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody.